On this meeting of the West Branch Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We've got a quorum, but we may have a couple members coming in a little bit like Emily is with us on Zoom there. The first thing is to have a roll call. Wesley?
Your person Fuller?
Here.
Commission member Powers?
Here.
Vance Coy absent. Walsh?
Here.
Absent. Bauer?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here. Okay, we have an agenda in front of us and I hope you folks in the audience had a copy of it. If not, there's copies over there by the door. And the first item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda as it is? So motion. Moved it second. All those in favor, I?
I.
Okay, that gives us our first item, which is to take a look at the May 25th meetings of the commission. And I'd be happy to entertain any changes or any suggestions for anything that got missed on those minutes. Don't usually have any, anything we got missed, but just in case. Is everyone in a chance to take a look at this? There are no changes, additions, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of the May 25th meeting minutes. So we're moving second here. Okay, all those in favor, I?
I.
Next, we have our special July 6th commission meeting. So again, any changes or additions or anything about those minutes you'd like to bring up? Very none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
And second, okay, all those in favor, I?
I.
I. Okay, those passed. The first real item on our agenda is to have a public hearing and it's about rezoning. Number of properties around the whole site to a planned unit development, land unit development. And I don't know if everyone is quite aware of what a planned unit development is. It's something we've discussed as commission members a number of times and essentially have been quite supportive of. It's the idea of taking a fairly large area instead of looking at rezonations and so forth for individual properties within that area. It's a matter of trying to have a coherent development, one that has a variety of different housing types. But it is not only housing, but also has commercial activity of one type or another, one that has easy access by residents. And indeed, it's something that has been getting a great deal more attention over, say, the past decade throughout country. So with that preface, I think that what we need is to begin our public hearing. And do we have any written comments from this PUD?
Not received any comments.
No written comments. So it's up to verbal ones. Yes. Oh, yeah. It's sometimes easier to speak standing up.
Yeah. I'm Hillary Mauer. I live in the first block of North Forest Street. And I think that this is a great idea. I don't have any problem with that. I just wanted to insert some of some thoughts about how it could be developed. From little things like, oh, it would be great to have a pedestrian bridge going to the park. From, from there to like a kind of a wider look at it and that, you know, that's the old depot spot. And the railroad came here 151 years ago. And, and it was a lifeblood of the community once it settled and that really spurred development. Before that, it was just that road from Debbyport to the city, right? The mail route. And I think it would be good to, for one thing, our houses that face that are all over 100 years old, 120, 130 years old. And it would be nice if what develops on the west side of Forest Street matches the character. Doesn't obviously have to be that old, but it would be really nice if that character isn't broken at the road. And the other thing is, I think it'd be nice to pay homage to the depot. There's a depot street. It would be really nice to like, show that street in a different kind of pavement or something and put up signage or whatever that talks about the importance of the railroad to the people of the town. I brought in. I just, I brought that one to show that I really liked that picture of the depot.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I think that's all my comments actually, but I just, I just, I think it's a great idea, but it should fit with the neighborhood.
Well, Hillary, one of the advantages of a PUD is that there's a chance to bring in these nuances to make it a better development and a better neighborhood for people. We have talked.
Make sure it has a sign one along the forest street. It'd be nice to have a sign.
Well, it's a general matter. But, you know, one, one of the things that indeed is possible is to talk about design standards. And we discussed design standards. We haven't gotten that far, but this will be a great opportunity with this development, I suspect, to bring in some ideas about design standards. Your point about taking into attention the historic nature of the area is a very good one. You don't want properties that face 100-year-old houses that are completely askance with those houses. And paying attention to the railroad depot as well is, as you're saying, that was an important part of the development of the city. City without railroads in 1875 or so weren't cities. They could never develop. So being on a rail line was highly important and quite possibly recognizing the historic nature of that would be good as well. So I appreciate these comments.
I don't know if you get information from the state, but it's not the Historical Society, but it's linked with them, that they have a program for giving grants to put up signs marking historical things. And for free, I mean, it's $2,000 or whatever. It would be really nice to tap into that for that and say that the travelers rest and some things like that. And kind of, I mean, there are very few towns, if any, in Iowa that have as much history as this town. And I feel like we just kind of give it short shrift sometimes, times, and we forget that it's, it can be a powerful thing to, to know the history and honor it.
It's mainly for tourists and for people in the towns as well. Our historic preservation plan does recognize travelers' rest. And has a number of other ideas in it, enhancing the history of the town.
Right.
There's been sort of stymied by not getting through with the local, what is it called? Trying to remember now. But there, there is a particular set of criteria that you have to utilize and follow through on before you're able to certified local government. That's exactly it. Before you're able to tap those funds. The funds aren't very great, but as you say, even signage is desirable.
Some kind of, oh, some kind of push would be great. Yeah, I was on historical preservation for a while and I didn't feel like it was going anywhere. So I had other things I had to take care of, but I really, I really love what they're doing and they're very tapped into all of that. So whatever it takes to keep that moving, that should continue as well.
Thank you. Do others have questions?
Hey, well, thanks, folks. Oh.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm old and I'm hard to hear you, so I couldn't say, but you are on 4A.
Yes, yes, right.
Okay. My name, my name is Dave Clark. I own a four bucks right through on North Forest Street. And I have some questions mainly prompted by my experts, the local zoning ordinances. But as the part that you're rezoning for the housing development, does that encompass everything from Main Street to where West Branch Roofing has their, what's that next street?
College Street, East College Street.
My, my first question is, wouldn't that amount to a spot zoning if you just do this part, not the entire block? That it would include Bennett's and my property and the next two houses?
I would say the answer to that is no. What we're trying to do is.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd say the answer is no. What we are doing is taking a very large parcel of land and rezoning that large parcel. Now, if you are next to that parcel and would like to be part of the planned unit development, oh, I suspect that might be possible.
I still didn't hear.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. My, my voice is not that strong. My, my answer is no, it's not spot zoning. And what it, what it is, is an attempt to bring in a large parcel of undeveloped land and rezone that.
I understand that, but isn't, wouldn't that be better, in my opinion, to bring the whole thing in as one zoning rather than having residential art, what do you call it, R1A, is that what you call it, for residential single family for two houses in there? And then you have commercial right next to it, and then you have mine, which is a, which is a multiple family dwelling, and then you have Bennett's that has a, as a trailer set. Wouldn't it be better to zone the whole thing the same way?
We'll see if others have any comments on that. And Roger might also.
It's just a question.
Of course, of course.
I'm not for or against either way.
Understood.
I, I, I still think that's a spot zoning.
Roger, if you'd like to respond.
Well, we are including, we are including the Bennett property. We are including the Miller property on the corner of North of Ford and, and we're including that. We're including the grain elevators, the grain bins, we're including the grain bins. And the West Branch Roofing property, all the way to College. So we're going from Main Street to College Street. Whole block except for, I don't think we included your piece of property. In the two or three houses to the north. Didn't include those.
Yeah, I know it's not, but what, but that was my question is, is why stop in the middle of a block?
Well, we weren't going to rezonate existing houses that are already, they are already zoned R2, I believe. Those two houses are in an R2 zone, maybe.
And it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood as well. So.
Those residential houses would be neighboring properties to other residential properties. If those property owners were interested in being zoned as a PUD, we would certainly entertain changing their property zoning to a PUD.
I don't know. West Branch Roofing was probably a judge.
I think they're going to like it because it means they can go to.
I have just for matter consistency as far as I'm concerned, I don't think it all.
Do you want yours, do you want yours in, in on it? Would you like your property? Is that what you're saying? Is you'd like your?
I don't care. It's there. It's an old property. You know. If there's ever a development, and sorry to talk about, it's going to enhance mine. So I don't, it doesn't make any difference to me one way or the other, but if I were a single family owner, I would probably be.
Would present us fewer challenges down the road if we were to say, want to use those properties for future PUDs to take care of it now with a volunteer.
I suspect that would be desirable.
I said, I give my.
No, well, that's good points.
No, it's a very good point. Appreciate, appreciate you bringing it. I feel if we have volunteers at this point, it could keep us from being in a pinch position.
Do this again.
I know Roger's been talking with various properties about possibility of expanding that PUD. Okay.
I'm the Roger LeMay. So well, I will officially go on record as supporting this rezoning. We are rezoning from Main Street to College Street. Everything is included except, I don't know why we did drag your property into it. I don't know why. I guess we thought about it, but it's stolen. You for some reason. The two houses, I don't think we need to rezone those. They're residential already and that's up to them. And you can come in later at any time. If you want to bring your property in.
Yeah, certainly not too late.
The developer wants to buy your piece of property and they want it into a PUD, we would certainly do it. So my support is, this is necessary to invite proper development is what we're looking for and we have more control if it's a PUD of what it's going to look like. You know, we have more control over the PUD process than it's just spot lot after lot after lot. We have all the control. So that's why I support.
Again, that, that word cohesive is very important. Something that is not just an individual lot by lot, but a cohesive development.
Right. With the trail.
Yeah, with a trail. Okay, who else would like to speak, one way or another? There is no one. I'll close the public hearing. And open to discussion the members of the commission before we move to the rezoning request. Any further thoughts? Ryan?
I think this was something we thought might have already happened a while ago when we originally discussed this PUD. I don't think there's any reason we wouldn't want to move forward with it. I think the reason that we're now bringing it up is because we kind of realized it didn't actually get formally approved at the stage when you're reviewing the improvements that West Branch Roofing would do. So I think it's time to get it done so we can move forward with that property.
There is. Emily, don't want to forget you.
Nope, I, I agree with what Ryan said.
Yes.
John, I, I've got a question regarding this PUD and since it this involves with, with West Branch Roofing.
Yeah.
Just by looking down through the PUD ordinance and the permitted land uses.
And West Branch Roofing is going to want to go ahead and put a warehouse there.
And I don't see where warehouse would be allowed.
That was written, correct me if I'm wrong, with the intention that we can. It was written basically to fit what we originally thought the Crowe property was going to be used for.
Well, but Ryan, the reason why I'm saying is, is I'm looking at, you know, permitted land uses and it goes number K says building contractors, office only. And I just don't want to lead anybody astray on this, you know what I mean? I just want to make sure that if, if the city is going to go ahead and do this PUD, that with the intention of allowing West Branch Roofing to go ahead put up a new building, you know, and, and that's what they think.
Right.
And we go ahead and approve this and then we go ahead and tell them they can't do it. I don't, I don't think that's our intent, but I just want to make sure.
So I think what you're suggesting is that we need to expand the PUD ordinance in terms of purposes.
That'd be better though, because I don't think we want a bunch more warehouses or industrial going into that PUD, like whoever buys that, we don't want that filled with that kind of.
In other words, we could have a special exemption.
Special exemption is a fair fit for this case because our intent with rezoning it was to allow their setbacks to be mean.
Right, right, yes.
But a special exemption for existing property. I don't know why.
Roger?
Tara, you finding that West Branch Roofing building as a warehouse, though, why can't that be a building contract?
Well, it, it can be, but if you remember the plans that they were looking at, building had garage doors and material storage. And it did have some offices on, I think it was second floor, if I remember correctly. And the primary use is, is storing materials and everything. You really can't call it office.
For storing trucks and crane, crane.
Yeah, but what it said.
That also is the building contract.
I, I understand it, but what it, what it says is, is no shops or equipment and material storage. I just want to make sure we're clear that if we're, if we're going ahead and PUD in this, that we're not going to go ahead and say, West Branch Roofing, now you can't rebuild and put up a new shop or whatever. I just want to make sure of that. I don't, I, I guess I just don't think that would be right if we could do something like that.
Is it possible to do a special exception then?
As far as I can tell, I think it would be, and I think that the mission is generally in favor of exactly that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely. But I, I just want to make sure.
That would be a later point.
I mean, West Branch Roofing, but it's been out a long time.
Still, the PUD is still better than what's there, the industrial zoning that's there now.
Yeah, correct the shape of that lot, yes.
Ryan?
You have, I think that the purpose, another purpose of the PUD is so that we can have an opportunity to review property that are a something that's going to be developed on a property and I think, you know, West Branch Roofing came in and presented what they wanted to do and generally we're all in favor of it, so I don't there'd be any resistance, you know. What I think generally, I'm in support of whatever needs to happen so they can build a new building on their property. Prove the College Street business profile there with all the new development that might be right next to it.
Anyone else?
You know, another, another option is if the West Branch Roofing come in here with their office slash warehouse and 51% of it was office, the primary use is office. You know, then that would probably fit into our, you know, building contractor's office, so forth. But we still need, we still need to address, you know, if there's going to be any storage or anything outside. I mean, that's, you know. Knowing a bell, put a certain size building on there and I'm sure they might have storage on the exterior. I mean, if they could go ahead, worst case scenario, get a special use permit and send it to go ahead and, you know, maybe they plan on having exterior storage, we could require some type of that to take screening or something on that, screen it. I mean, just, just throwing things out there.
Right. I think with this kind of operation, you'd expect some temporary outside story, but permanent outside storage, no. You know, when the special exception request comes up and we'll have to talk about those. Well, then, let me call for a motion to approve the rezoning request for the PUD.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, I think probably we should have a call for voting this case. Wesley?
Powers? Yes. Our?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Vance Coy?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item C about the Parkside Hills plan. And I think that Leslie provided this. And that, that state plan. So I think we should begin, if we have visitors here who'd like to explain a little bit more about what's going on with it. Enjoyed hearing about him in the past.
This is the final plan for Parkside Hills. PUD only plan. And we just like to get the client's plan through through Z, such that construction is going along fairly good. And he's updated a lot of the streets today. They got lottery put in, yep. And then we'll be ready for the public improvements for, for the inspected and proved by David, who on September 4th. Get a little bit. When we get the final plan to prove through Z. Questions?
I'd like to ask, have you been in any changes since the preliminary plan?
Think there may have been a small change on lots. I don't think we have determined that one. The only there was a corner. Preliminary plan. We didn't. That's been pulled back. It's just a lot there now too, in the lot 10. Yeah, the corner lot 10 changed a little bit to DOT, took some right away and we reduced a couple of units there for the storm lot of these. But other than that, it's in pretty much general performance with the final plan.
Any questions?
Yeah, did you, did you see Dave's markup on, on the plan?
It was just five minutes ago.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
Chance to look it over. Didn't seem like there was anything too major. We'll get these addressed and resubmitted probably by then.
I guess, I guess one question, that mailbox cluster that's going to be for the whole development?
We will probably have to, the number of units that are going on lot nine and 12 throughout there, we'll probably have a cluster for some of that, maybe up to threes depending. Typically, when you do multifamily in a block like that, if we can, we'll just put one per block. So I'll just, I'll run it for the clusters. So we'll just have to figure out where the best spot is. Because we, if you remember, what we have is that center sidewalk between the buildings with the green space in between the buildings instead of. And so it'd be nice just to be on the corner door or walk onto that sidewalk and have something down the end of each corner rather than having to walk, you know. This has quite an elevation too. You've got a pretty good elevation change, so just putting one, and again, it's the office, so just what we can, so.
Now, I've seen on the other plans where I know David marked up that whether it's going to be an easement or will there be another outlot or anything on your, your, how's that going? Will the bail cluster be on an actual easement or?
Most likely just easement, but it could be its own outlot.
Yeah, that's what I've seen. I've seen it done different ways.
Yeah.
You know.
Unless it's required to be an outlot, I think the easement works.
I think easement's fine to me anyways.
So, oh, right. Is, it looks like he's marked it up here. Lot nine includes the private street, is that correct? Where you're going to have four complexes on both sides of the?
Yes, there's a private street down, kind of like at the center of lot nine and there's units on either side.
I guess generally the, the plan for the development hasn't changed much from what we had seen originally, which is four complexes around lot nine. I guess generally the, the plan for the development hasn't changed much from what we had seen originally, which is four complexes around lot nine, duplexes on the north edge. I guess fourplexes on twelve as well, and then eleven is maybe the other thing we have.
We have threes, two, threes and fours depending on spacing on lot twelve and then nine, and, uh, yeah, so we're still with the, um. There's a row that faces the property to the east, and then you go into the street that runs lot nine and division are coming off Sycamore Drive and off that where they face together. And then the parker center green space and stuff, that's like, it's kind of that, yeah. So. Yep. Yep, so we lost a few here in our stormwater detention, that's what we're talking about, so the stormwater, I think we've lost a few. Yeah, see, we have that center walkway and it's more a little bit different. The street here has the, yeah, the townhouse design is, uh, like this, we just have the reflex here instead of a fourplex. To make that work. Everything else is laid out the same, I think we initially sent it. Yep. This is, it's hard to see that. It's on that, we've got a drawing that we're working on for someone. And this is seeing the same, these are all the same, so.
And storage units at the?
Yep, yeah, that's all, yep, everything else is kind of staying the same there, so.
This might be a question for, I don't even know if anyone here knows the answer, but do we have to review site plans for anything over duplex? Yeah, every time, but these are PUDs, I mean, so if you like this entire lot will come in as a?
Yes, yeah, so we've actually, we have this sent this in initially, these are being, I think we're pretty close to being done with all of this, right? So when we come back and do each one of these, we will be sending them in individually other than these. Um, and Ron and I have been working on kind of all of this stuff right now, and that's why this was the first one done. This one will start in the spring, I think this stuff starts in the spring, so you'll see those kind of come in over the winter time. And then we'll just, uh, sell, oh, yeah, I've got to get that stuff done too, but we've actually, yeah, everything should be good at all, it's submitted individual as each individual lot. So.
Great.
Yeah.
Whatever else is released and be done.
We, that private drive on there, we'll have to put a street name on that, that's one of the things that Dave's, yeah, we've got private drive there and then we've got a private drive up there, we'll just have to name them so that they have addresses on them. So, yeah, because, uh. We've done it before, similarly in Tiffin, where I did a project like this, I had these same buildings. Um, and the rear, um, we actually had the rear is your address. They faced a street here, but then the street that's behind it is actually addressed, and then lot, or we addressed every one of the garages on the back side of it, so that, or that's what the, when we worked with the fire department on that one, to get, make sure we got our address stuffed up.
Did you narrow them up at all that, the private drive?
Yeah, from a standard street, they are, I think we finished on, we finished on our twenty foot drive on that.
Twenty foot drive.
Yeah, on the private drive. Yeah.
That's so good for emergency medical access.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, everything's been kind of, everything is reviewed and reviewed and and looked at, so, yeah, all those questions, we've talked, Dave, uh, checking during a bunch about this stuff, so we've kind of been working with him on all that.
Sorry to see the independent living disappearing.
Um, that was just something that, um, those overall have labored a bunch in the last six to eight months because of the costs associated with them. Um, and so, uh. The people that we were talking to, the two different people, just expense wise, it gets to be pretty expensive and they just couldn't make numbers work on it. So, so, yeah, but that one is just sitting there kind of as a lot right now, and we've got a couple of different designs that we're trying on it and see what we can make work. Um, I still want it to be cohesive with what's everything else that's going on, make sure it looks good, I kind of went off a neighbor.
Concert venue.
But.
Sorry, concert venues.
Yeah, no, we, we've got zero lots across the street, they probably wouldn't appreciate that, those if I want so very well. So, so, yeah.
Chad, is this, is this gone, and does anybody know, is this gone by, uh, party regarding the twenty foot lift road? For private access?
If you saw this a month ago.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Cause there's gonna be no parking down there, private street.
Uh, no, we put, there's, on this, here there isn't, but we have this addition of the twenty up here one. Yeah, we've got the two, we've got the, the off street, uh, the garages, the off street, and then we put those extras on the end, yeah. I wouldn't have moved forward unless I, like I said, talked to Dave and talked to everybody and made sure that everybody was good with what we were doing, so, yeah, cause we have the same thing here, we have this off street parking up there to help with that. Yeah, and the rest of them all moved out, so this street came out, it's twenty-nine foot street and then a thirty-one foot street there, so we go back to the center of the street.
So who maintains the plot B then?
This, this is all, we'll have an association out there, we'll have, we've got a little bit of green space on this outlot, we'll have these detention basins, we'll have the mailboxes and kind of the green space around all of it, so there will be an association that emails.
Got you.
So, yeah, there's just, with mailboxes like that stuff, you have.
Yeah, that's common, right.
Yeah, that's common, we do it pretty much everywhere.
And you've shared with us a rendering?
Yeah, that was a rendering. Looks better in color, but.
Well, my printer doesn't do.
That's what your, your.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, do you have a color one there?
Mine's color either, I think that sent to me.
No, I haven't.
Oh, wait, no.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I sent this, okay, yeah, I sent this last week, last on Friday.
Yeah.
And they're gonna, uh, they would like to request a special meeting sometime later this month. Um, staff hasn't had a chance to have an internal meeting, so we'll have an internal meeting, provide any comments back to them so that we can schedule that meeting. Um, so they can keep moving forward, but yeah, we do have the site plan checklist and everything in order to move forward.
Sounds good. Mills, thank you both.
But.
Unfortunately, Emily couldn't see all this stuff.
This has been shared before.
Yes. I think we've had enough discussion. Am I right on that? And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Parkside Hills final plan with a slight changes that Dave's messenger has asked for. I have a second. Second by, uh, Fran.
Sure.
Are you?
You made the motion, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it.
I thought it would move things along. Um, so, roll forward.
Uh, Commission, uh, Councilor. Or.
Yes.
Our.
Yes.
Hours.
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes.
Vance, wait.
Yes.
Okay, this is to item D, which is a comprehensive plan discussion. And what I had in mind was more discussion on trees, on the other hand, um, that was partly triggered by the fact that a tree survey is desirably coming down every ten years. I had no idea that we have one. No, I do. So, Matt, you've got a tree survey for us from DNR?
Yeah, we haven't received it yet. Came out, did the survey, we just haven't. Well, I'd expect that.
Well, and let's put that off until such time as, as the survey is, is provided, and I think that, you know, the ratio and global warming and whatever else. Um, more attention is something that the comprehensive plan says to, uh, take up trees, and it's something that we can take up later when we get that, that survey in, uh, public trees. I have been looking through the plan again, and, um, one of the chapters, I think, can be reasonably updated at this point, it's chapter four on community profile and character. And the reason to make changes to that is that we now have the census out. And so we have new comparable information about our peer communities, uh, we have new information about, uh, West Branch. And, um, so I thought I'd take a stab at updating that one. And bring it to us, not in a special meeting in October, but, uh, at the meeting that we have at the end of November. Um, and once you get that, I'll probably get it in advance, so you have a chance to look it over, it's a very short chapter, but, um. I think that'll give us a chance to discuss it and see if there have been some important changes, um, demographic ones, uh, whatever kind of changes that, uh, that we might see. It's a growing community, and so one has to keep track of those sorts of things. Are there other things on the comprehensive plan that any of you would like to bring up?
Uh, we did talk about last time about trying to make a, uh, an effort toward focusing R two living in certain areas or kind of positioning them, not so they can get scattered throughout. You know, family dwelling, uh, single home, um, I'd like to see, I, I don't know if that plays into this conversation or not, but it's definitely something I don't want to put over, I, I want to address it. I'd like to see R two in, kind of defined R two and not getting intermingled, um, throughout the city, so.
I think that it's more something that should be addressed in the housing chapter.
Housing.
Yeah, and that's, that's much more extensive one, worth, uh, reading over. But, uh, you know, with this new development, we're going to have some lower income housing, I mean, in comparison with, uh, the single family homes that, uh, that are preponderant. And I think that's a part of what, uh, that housing chapter looks for in terms of having more opportunities for people and, uh, therefore increasing the population. So I, I think that's a very good step, but, uh. We should take up the housing chapter again.
I might.
Yes.
Also mentioned, um, in our last meeting, we briefly discussed the, uh, the need for our, uh, capital improvements plan.
Yes.
Incorporate things from the comprehensive plan and that I don't think we currently have capital improvement plan, but when one gets put together, we'd like to get that reviewed and make sure that things that are being built in the next five years are incorporated that.
I, I think comments from this commission will be very useful. Uh, there were other things in that, um. Uh, May twenty-fifth meeting that really didn't get, uh, talked about much, and one was design standards. And, uh. So I, I think that with these two PUDs, we're going to have more attention on design. And, uh, one of the problems with a small town is not having necessarily the professionals who can deal with design questions. But, um. Are, are, are any thoughts that you folks have in terms of design standards?
I think as it applies to the PUD on the crawl site. Best way for us to approach it might be to have neighborhood meetings when there's a, when there's something to propose, like a developer comes in with the rendering of what they want to put on the east face of that lot, the, the members of the east side of Fourth Street should be, at least provide an opportunity to come in and share their thoughts like Hillary was doing tonight about what you think should go there.
Can they go across from their house?
Yeah, at least some input about how it looks and. Infield Development in general, probably appreciates those opportunities.
A public discussion and a chance for people to see things before they are, are in place is really a very desirable procedure. I don't suppose the city council would be interested in having a design consultant? That speaks funny. Right.
I know I've worked in cities when I was younger, Chicago, every, every city had their own architecture standards.
Right.
Which architects are given to, but small town Iowa is. Small town Iowa is.
Wait, let's, we got a volunteer right here.
Yeah, you're, you're in close, that's why I'm completely, you're in close, so I'm not feeling, that's good design. Close public comments, right? Otherwise, I got my hand up near.
That, that's right.
Small town Iowa is tough to, to really enforce. And app designs, sort of revisions or.
I don't question that.
It's just really tough in small town Iowa to go across. I would love to have an architectural review every hour or two, I would love that. But it's just not possible.
Roger, is there some big time Iowa that we should take a look at and maybe see if that?
I don't know.
You know, where some big town group is, and just try to glean some of that, see where some of that might fit.
I'd like to know of any, so.
I haven't arrived yet.
What?
Have you been to the door or?
Um, I just.
Some of the corridor, some of the two corridors here, do we have, you know, two eighty corridor, the thirty-five?
Well, actually, Iowa City has dealt with exactly this question. And, um. Who knows, some of the people on, on their staff might be willing to, uh, volunteer some ideas.
Last, our last conversation was in covenants and some of that, and we talked a little bit, Tara, I think, about, uh, some places where covenants and some things may be bringing some of that conversation up, and maybe if we can lean some of that into design standards and some of the things that we need to talk about that, at least that would get a start of grounds.
Yeah, we, the city of Brooklyn's a covenant, that's the lead of all the subjects.
It's a guy that said, oh, it's.
Yes.
All right. Um. I've dealt with this lots and lots of years, uh, in every different city around here, from here to Cedar Rapids. Um, what, what you're having a discussion about is what pushes, uh, developers and affordable housing out of bounds. Um, yeah, when we, we do our development documents, you'll have covenants and restrictions and things like that. Um, as a developer, I pulled those restrictions out of my covenants over the last four or five years because of the fact that when you mandate certain things, you drive housing up very quickly in cost with things like Robert was saying, the picture of the roof having to be a minimum of six twelve. Well, the difference between a six twelve roof and a five twelve roof could be two thousand dollars. So, and you won't hardly notice that on house when you build that house. And so there are a lot of things, and I have worked with the city of Iowa City over the last twelve years, probably. And have sat on different committees, helping to try and make everybody understand how this, so I have a ton of background in this. Whatever you do, don't hire a consultant for half a million dollars, I would do it for, you know, two hundred dollars, but, um. You just have to be very careful, um, when you go that direction, because it, it escalates very quick, especially when you start to throw in the covenants and throw the twenty-five percent stone and brick on the outside, which a lot of cities have done, when we're doing farmhouse style, we pull all that stone and brick off and then burn it aside and houses look fantastic. So there's a lot of things you can really dive into, and I, yeah, I would love just to sit down, I, I can sit down and have that conversation and kind of go over what I've been through in Tiffin, North Liberty, Iowa City over the last fifteen years. So, before you go, hire a consultant.
Well, thank you very much, I, I don't think we have five hundred thousand dollars for a consultant, maybe we can come up with two hundred. Or a good deal. I noted something else in the, uh, May twenty-fifth. Minutes, and that was questions about signage, uh, whether we should have a city ordinance on signage. All we have right now is signage in historic district and whether we needed sign permits or signs. Um, I don't know how far you've got with all that, but it seemed to have been left without any decisions.
That coincide with the Hoover Park, don't they kind of frown on that stuff?
One side of what?
Hoover Park, don't they kind of frown on some of that stuff?
I don't, I don't think so, not, uh, signs that deal with commercial areas or anything like that. Um. I, I think that, uh, we do have signage regulations and permits and so forth in the historic district, but because you really want to keep it as, right? And, uh, so big neon signs and so forth wouldn't, uh, really go, but, um, we don't have, as far as I know anyway, sign requirements outside.
Ryan didn't, wasn't there a sign ordinance in place when we did the daycare board? I thought we had, we somehow referred to a sign ordinance.
Yeah, I think every, uh, I think every zoning district has signage that is allowed or isn't allowed. So there's guidance in each zoning district about what types and sizes, signs you can have, lighted and not lighted, sides, two sided, one sided, and square feet. I think the reason this came up in that meeting was related to interstate signage and how our signage guidance could be in conflict or just not, uh, clear enough to prevent something illegal from going up in town that might be not allowed by the interstate. Signing rules, is that?
Yeah, what it is, I think.
Yeah, what it is, I think, with any sign that, that is abuts an interstate or state highway, you know, like highway thirty-eight or highway six or, or whatever. Uh, technically has to be approved by the state. Even if we go ahead and approve it, and the state denies it, guess what? It's denied. So they, they have to send it to the state to have it approved also.
Maybe the step that we needed to take from that discussion was adding some language, some general language to get the. Incorporate the, the DOT guidelines for, you know, the interstate signage.
Well, I, I, I think we need to do our, our own, our own, uh, sign ordinance. But I, but I, I think we just need to make sure that we tell, uh, the person who's applying for it, either the business owner or the actual sign, uh, installer. That it needs to be cert, you know, passed by, uh, by the state, you know, before they send it to us. I think we, that'd be a better way to do it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if we want to incorporate the state's ordinance into ours.
Right.
Terry, can you define a budding, a state highway or interstate? Like, is that immediately next to it or like, let's say. Come and go sign, is that also fall under that ordinance?
I, I would, uh, I would say no for that.
Okay.
I would say, you know, uh. Something that's, you know, right next, right next to the highway, the state or the interstate would be, need to have a state approval. Um, but, you know, come and go is quite a ways back.
Okay, that was.
But then again, like, like Matthew just said, there might be something in the state ordinance also about the actual height of the sign. You know, for, uh, visibility also. This goes back to Lady Bird Johnson, you know, and I think it's about a thousand feet from the interstate.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a so far and so high. That's, that's where the DOT gets into it. Like I have, for instance, I got a call again today about a sign in the HCI district, so it comes up all the time. And this is for plastic products. Now granted, they're down the street, but they're in the HCI district. And again, I referred into the DOT because it says right in there, says their sign may be subject to. A, a state permit, so I'm referring them to them first, but then if they come back and say, okay, they said I don't need one, I'm just gonna put up whatever, well, we don't have any kind of size requirements or where they can put it. And that's what happened. As you drive into Tidewater, they were told they didn't need a permit from the state. The study doesn't have any. Sizes, illumination, so they put it right in the right of way, which we wouldn't have allowed, because we don't allow anything in the right of way. They concreted them in and then they just kept adding to it. Because someone else put their sign, so it must be okay, and we can't get them to take them down.
I think I dropped the ball on this. I think I was supposed to try to come back to something. I will work on that. And I just saw that.
Want me to, I mean, come up with some. Separate sign ordinance.
Well, especially if Wesley's getting calls all the time about this, um, some kind of a permitting process of, we know what's happening. Could be desirable. Okay, well, let's put it on our agenda next, uh, next meeting, uh, even if we can't do it, I suppose for the special meeting, but for November. Right, uh.
I was just gonna ask if that would also apply, like, we have on both sides of town, some billboard signs that are visible from the interstate, but it weighs off the property. So if West Branch grows to the west. Someone wanted to put up a billboard sign, we'd have to have some sort of, uh, that wouldn't necessarily be.
If it went west, it'd be outside of the city limits, so I would tell them, if you're outside of the city limits, we have no jurisdiction anyway. But as soon as they get to come and go in McDonald's, then.
That's, if you got a development like, uh, maybe it gets developed out there. Like I'm thinking of the, the storage units and, uh, commercial properties, I heard who, who, where they got a couple of new sites.
Yeah.
Like that.
Well, Terry, you might look and see if, uh, Johnson County has an exciting. Probably not, but I don't, I don't think Johnson County. All right, well, I think that takes care of, uh, our whole business and I have the signage question to our next, uh, next meeting. How about city staff requests? Any quiet?
Yeah, I've selected a new city administrator. I can't tell you who right now. Well, we've got, we've got a new person. Green to work. We're gonna hire someone.
Sounds good.
It might be six days before they can start. Contract signed. Hopefully by the end of this week, we'll announce.
Okay, the, uh, last item here is.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask if there's any report on the Greenview connection, because the person who used to sit here asked about it every meeting for like three years.
He's been notified.
Somebody called.
He meant yesterday, and I'm like. He was gonna go drive on it. Matt, Matt can give an update.
We want to know, it's in there. We're, uh, getting elevations put in next week by being case and put sidewalk on the west side of the road. I don't know if we're gonna put it in yet until we do the sidewalk that's out, because it's just gonna end at, both ends. So we'll get the area done. Aside from that, I think we're just gonna seal coat up, excuse the concrete for now. Yeah. I'll see it down, that is, if you're Roger, let's graph in the yard.
Overwhelming support from the Planning and Zoning Commission members current and past.
Especially best. Um, I, I did notice one other thing from our, our minutes, and, uh, that is the, uh, vacation of, uh, Bertie Drive. Is that ever settled? Well, it's still a live issue and we can have it on our next meeting.
Where was that last?
They have committed a plan to fire chief approval. Place to turn around, and that has not been.
Well.
Officially, the turnaround, John, for your, uh, permission to turn around was the, the lot on the end of the street.
Right, and, uh, Jerry had said that, well, you can turn around.
Yeah.
In our area or whatever.
Must remain open, loud.
Well, I saw that as something that just really hadn't been decided, so. Okay, well, our next meeting, Leslie will tell us when that is, as soon as she gets to figure it out. And, uh, then, one beyond that is November twenty-third. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.